Close meeting order, please stand salute the flag.
We bid to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all of those in harm's way, please. Thank you. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time and place of this meeting and the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Such schedule of and notice of meetings is posted at the municipal building, the Mount Olive Library, Board of Education offices and six schools was submitted to the Daily Record for publication on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two and was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. I direct this announcement to be entered immediately. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Dr. Gales?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. We met?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Zire?
Here.
Mr. Scholacci?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize, but we are going to have to go right into closed session for about fifteen minutes. So I beg your pardon, refreshments will be served. They have a motion to go in closed session.
So moved.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Matters of attorney.
Attorney Klein privilege.
Make sure my amp is up here, they can't hear me back over there on my microphone, okay? You hear me better now?
Yeah.
No? Yes?
I guess. Don, I think that's yours?
Yeah. We're back at open session, thank you for your patience. You know, we have a school district as big as ours, we have a lot of complex issues in that we're all working people up here. We don't have the time to really get together and all together and discuss these, so...
They can't hear you.
Yeah, they can't hear you. So can you hear me now?
Is that any better? I'm not. I don't think they'll hear me back tomorrow. Do we have a bullhorn for Mr. Strachey?
Take it, I don't need it.
See now everybody can hear you.
Can you hear me?
How about now?
I don't need a microphone. You got loud and louder over here, neither of us need a microphone. Here, try this.
You want this one? Try this one.
Well, let's see, wait, let's see what we do there.
You might not be able to pull it that far.
It'll double you up here.
How about now?
You have to talk right into it.
You gotta get close.
We'll get you some cheers up here. Okay, um, see where I'm at here. Mrs. Fenton, would you please move the approval of monthly...
I make a motion to approve the minutes 2.00.
I make a motion to approve the minutes 2.1 July 25th and 2.2 July 25th.
Second. Any questions from the board?
I do. Let me just find this section. There's one section in the minutes that I do question, just the verbiage. Where we were talking about.
You're talking about the public portion?
The public.
Okay.
Yeah. Where Ms. Wimmet under 4.6 reported with regards to, I'm trying to read where it was. With regards to the gymnastics conversation, a quote that Ms. Wimmet had stated that she was unaware of the gymnastics program. I just found that the language was incorrect. It should be that we were unaware of the gymnastics plan or equipment plan.
Correctly. We knew about the program because we approved this way back when they were going to Northern Elite. So this was, we actually were sharing it, I believe, with somebody too. I don't remember who that was that I thought we were, but Lisa's correct on that.
Sorry, I was on page five, midway down.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Northies?
Yes.
Mrs. Wimmet?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mr. Strachey?
Yes. Before I go any further, it would be appreciated if all board members could put their iPhones away and cell phones away. Any communications from any of the board members? Superintendent?
None at this time.
Dr. Giordano, do you have personnel, please? Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped the superintendent's report.
I just have a sigh of relief there, too. Wow, thank you.
After this, after hit this whole thing, we better have it. All yours, Dr. Giordano.
Thank you. So the board members have the slides there that I provided them. So tonight, I'm very proud to introduce the work product of our administrative retreat that took place during the last week of July. For those of you who've been around for a while, what we do each year is we review the strategic plan, and then we come up with what things we need to do this year based upon data to make sure that we achieve the strategic plan this year. So one of the things that has been a focus, you know, for long before I was here and will be for a long time, is that we're committed to the success of every single student. So that's something that shines through in everything we do. And to give folks who are not familiar, but we went through a strategic planning process in January of 2019. And so the current strategic plan is a process of us looking at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that were there to the district. And this is something that we look at annually. So this February, we went through the same process again with the full administrative team and the full board. And then we broke out into subcommittees on which designated directors met with members of the board to review that data, and then that went back out. So it's a constant feedback loop on where we need to be. But if you take a look at our strategic plan, which is hanging in every single classroom in the district, it is a simplified version of previous strategic plans, but many of the same things. So the learner priorities, these have been here in Mount Olive, the critical thinking, collaboration, innovation, and self-regulation. That's where we're looking for the product of our learning, what the kids are going to walk away with. That has been here and has been kind of, you know, an annual thing, a perennial thing that has been here for about 15, 20 years. In 2019, these six strategic goals, which I'll get into in a minute, were set by the board. And then what the administration does is annually, we set action steps. So each department chair, each building principal sets action steps, which are their individual administrator goals. And then we aggregate these for the things that we're going to try and accomplish this year, things that we have to accomplish, like, because this year it's a CUSAC year. I know everyone loves CUSAC. It's like a simultaneous root canal and a colonoscopy. We got that, we got that going on again this year. It's super enjoyable. And that's when the DOE comes in to look at where we are and how we perform. We also have other things going on, like we have to look at some of our reading data. So I'm going to go through what exactly those action steps are and how it relates to, how it relates to what we put out for the kids. But one of the things that has been going on for a while, and one of the things that we've been implementing since the board approved the manual in 2019, is response to intervention and multi-tiered systems of support. And so eight years ago, nine years ago, 10 years ago, the district did a lot of work with John Hattie, Dr. John Hattie. And John Hattie, through his meta-analysis, looks at what are the most effective things that a school district or a school can adopt. And in his meta-analysis, the highest ranked with a statistical effect size of 1.29 system-wide approach to education is response to intervention. And in 2020, the highest thing, collective teacher efficacy, Dr. John Hattie was asked to define, well, what is collective teacher efficacy? And in ASCV leadership, educational leadership, he said it's, you have RTI, teachers have PLC time, they have time to look at universal screening data, and they own the curriculum through curriculum mapping. We now have all those things present here. On top of that, we have our three triangles. This is how we've tried to implement it. So I live in a world of triangles. We have our RTI triangle here. Dr. Breton lives in the behavioral response intervention triangle here, and then our gifted and talented program. So all these triangles can just turn into a soup of acronyms and just another triangle that absolutely confuses parents, confuses students, and it becomes triangle fatigue. And so one of the things that, you know, Bill Robinson has said to me so many times, we have so many experts here, and we saw it when we went and presented at model schools, let's use some of our own internal voices to think about all these great pedagogies and how do we repackage it for us. So we're going to do that. But one other lens we have to pass this through is New Jersey statute code and CUSAC, in which we're required to have multi-tiered systems of support. And so how the state of New Jersey, this is typical, how the state of New Jersey decided to integrate these three triangles and simplify it for everyone is in this triangle right here. That's the simplified thing. But it also shows you the complexity of education. Now, if you show this to most people, and they're not millennials, they're going to say that that's the flux capacitor from Back to the Future. That's the secret to time travel. But you can see that that's not something that instills confidence. It's not something that's easily accessible. It's not something that kids can definitely access. So what I'm saying is, instead of taking a model, we're still going to have triangles. We can't get away from the triangles. Instead of taking a model that comes from a deficit mindset of intervention first, that is definitely overcomplicated, how are we communicating the work we're doing? What does it actually mean to kids? How does it make kids feel? How does it make parents feel? And so what I'm presenting to you, the sum of our work are the Mount Olive tiers of success. And simplifying all those acronyms, because you guys don't need to know GNT and RTI and PLCs and MTSS and all those things, here's what we're really trying to do with all those things. First and foremost, we need to make kids feel like they belong. We need to make kids feel like they belong. And I'm going to break that out, exactly what that means. But coming out of the pandemic, there's lots of kids who don't feel like they belong. They're not all right. They feel that things have been done to them. They're on their devices, nonstop. They handle conflict through their devices. Everything's on TikTok and Snapchat. And our teachers have to try and contend with that. And they dealt with the economic instability of inflation and all kinds of other things. Our kids need to feel like they belong. The second thing is that our kids need to feel like they believe. When they do meta-analysis on who are the most successful Navy SEALs, it's the ones who know they're going to complete, they believe they're going to complete the mission, even though that it's not going to be Plan A. It's probably going to be Plan C or D that they wind up going with, but they know they're going to get it done. And John Dewey told us about this 120 years ago, metacognition, where kids are actually setting goals for themselves, and they believe that they can make progress. And then the highest thing is success, that the kids actually achieve those goals. So when you break this out, there's a direct correlation to our district strategic plan and to all of the action steps that our administrators came up with. So the tier of belong, this is our physical and emotional safety. It's the inclusion, access, and equity that we guarantee every kid. It's the differentiation that takes place in the mixed classroom based on universal screening data. It's the marauder for life mentality that from pre-K through 12th grade, and when you graduate, you're a marauder for life. And that we're engaging kids, and we engage them in a way that they see themselves in their faculty and staff, that we actually represent the diversity of this community. And so that tier corresponds to strategic goal 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And believe, we're actually simplifying a major process of gifted and talented, MTSS, special education. But the most important thing is that whatever we're doing for kids, whether it is intervention, whether it's enrichment, whether it's extra support, they understand what we're trying to do. And that's that metacognition that John Dewey wrote about 120 years ago. And how we do that is through our personalized success plans, which the board passed a policy two years, and we're in our third year of implementing. And then the other thing here is that we measure and report out what exactly is personalized learning. That's goal 2, goal 3, and goal 6. And when we talk about success, something that we're going to do differently, we are an exceptional place. We are an exceptional place, but how can we prove it? And how we're going to prove it is that we're actually going to report out how kids did, did they achieve their four personalized learning goals that they set every year for themselves. What we're asking kids to do each year is set an academic goal, a wellness goal, a level of learning goal, and a social emotional goal. And we're going to track that, because that's far more important than their test scores, that they make progress in those four areas. And so this is a way for us to wrap our heads around the minutia and the acronyms and the edgy jargon that's there. And so you're going to see this, and we're going to spend a lot of time talking about this, because we think this and we believe this is an easier way to access those complex things, but at the same time, providing that accountability to the board, to the taxpayers, and the communities, the community that we're actually using research-based practice to advance the goals of the district. So very quickly, now I'm going to get into the minutia. We have six goals. And so our first goal, which you see represented by some highlights here, which is our most safe and innovative learning environment, our action steps for this year are to complete our projects, which are on schedule, make sure that we continue to have innovative learning spaces, whether that is our financial services lab, our Marauders Believe program, the Geo Dome. Make sure that we update in our unified district security manual. And to that, one of the measurable goals is that we need to do another security audit. In 2019, we did an inter-agency security audit with MOPD, the DOE, and the state police. I'm going to do another one of those. And we did an inter-district unification drill before the pandemic, that we do another one of those now. So those are our measurable goals in that area. Goal 2 is probably our most robust goal, and that's about the institutionalization of personalized learning, academic success for all of our kids. And this is the place where we look at lots of data, internal data, external data. But what prompted us in 2018 to adopt response to intervention as our playbook here was looking at our 2018, this is a report from the federal government. And so some of the data that we looked at was that we saw here in math at schoolwide, and then also in our white students, they were not meeting the federal target. Our socio-economically disadvantaged kids and our special education students were not meeting the federal target. We did not meet the federal target for graduation rate. Our African-American males did not meet the target for graduation rate, nor did our special education students and our socio-economically disadvantaged students. So this was the part for us to jump forward. Now, I keep saying, when we're in the 92 to 93% range, that's great. We're doing really well. But what about the other seven or eight percent? And that's the part we need to attend to, and that's the part that will truly make us exceptional. And we have done that, and our RTI system has worked. And we went from having a grad rate of 94% to a year ago, 95%, and this year it's even higher. And when we report out to the curriculum committee, we look at all of our subgroup data as well. So this is the type of data that we look at, and we have our own universal screening data with Linkit. And this is an example. This is the high school reporting out on their success and using the tool Linkit. So all this data goes into these action steps. But these are the action steps and goal tool 2 this year, to continue to institutionalize this and use the Mount Olive tiers of success as a way to crystallize this, to have a dashboard for the personalized student success plans that's available to the community by May 1st. Through the new computer science learning standards, and we started to implement them before the pandemic, but we want to actually look at the data, and are we creating a pipeline, especially for girls and underrepresented students, to the high school classes? Is there a connection there? We want to look at the science of reading data. So if you look at the front cover of Time Magazine, they talk about the science of reading. Based upon the feedback from our teachers, we implemented, I see people shaking their heads, we implemented foundations for every kid in September of 2019. Way ahead of the curve on that, but also based upon pedagogy, that's about 75 years old. Kids need phonics. And so we're going to take a look at that from a longitudinal 10-year study to see what it looks like when you implement phonics. And then to do a seven-year analysis of post-secondary outcomes. Where do our kids actually land? How many go into the military? How many go into career? How many go to two-year schools? How many go to four-year schools? And what trends can we identify? And then pass it through our graduates to say, what can we do to better support you? Goal number three, which is about the EQ of all of our learners, and these are actually what personalized success plans look like that our kids complete every single year, is to continue to implement our social emotional learning program through the Mount Olive tiers of success, to make sure that we measure and report on doing this, and to create a dashboard on what activities we actually have in place for restorative justice and behavioral response intervention. We started universally screening all of our kids for at-risk behavior, a voluntary program. We're going to continue to do that. The other thing, too, is to see that SEL is not just confined to students. It's also for staff as well. Our staff have been traumatized. The past three years have been terrible. The past decade has been really rough for teachers. 10 years ago, we got SGO shoved down our throats and the Teach New Jersey Act, and we all thought that was the low point. Well, then the pandemic happened, and in, you know, and in, you know, March of 2020, everyone was heroes. And by October of 2020, teachers were evil people making kids wear masks, right? So they've been through the wringer. So we need to make sure we support them as well. And then the other thing, we're going to do a seven-year look back using our Office of Civil Rights data to look at suspensions, violence, vandalism, discipline, and HIBs in all of our buildings, going back seven years, to identify the trends, to see what's in place, because that was a lot of the starting points. We started some of this with, with, with Dr., gosh, I forget his name, space him for a second, but he came to us from UCLA in 2020, and he went over a lot of that data with us. Shane, can you help me out here, buddy? Thanks. Dr. Tyrone Howard. He went over some of that data with us, but we want to go a little bit deeper on that. Do I have to advance? I got it, Shane. It's okay. I'm going to go to the next goal. Recruit, develop, and retain the most highly skilled and diverse workforce. So one of the things that we've realized is just having job fairs is not working. And so we developed university partnerships to get as many student teachers here as possible, so that they can see they have a home here in Mount Olive. Maybe they want to move here and work here for us. So one of the things we want to do is actually put out a publicly transparent dashboard to look at what are our activities and how has the applicant pool changed or not changed since we started taking a look at those different initiatives? The other thing is to continue to develop those university partnerships. Right now, we're kind of just all in North Jersey. We've expanded to New Jersey City University and St. Peters and William Patterson. But why not NYU? Why not Stockton? Like, you know, why are we not targeting beyond that? Right now, so many of our teachers come from within like about a 20-mile radius. One of the big things we need to do, the Teach New Jersey Act was signed into law in 2012. Who thinks we should still keep doing things in 2022 based upon 2012? Anyone think that's how we should keep doing things? Well, that's how we're still evaluating our teachers. So we're going to, we're going to bring together the DEAC for them to look at what's working, what's not working, get their voices, and how we can modernize our teacher evaluation system to a coaching model that's not a gotcha, but that's about a conversation about professional practice. Goal 5 is about our outreach. And so our measurable goals here are to make sure the new district website is launched by February 1st. We have six parent universities. I'm doing one on Labor Day. It's going to be a kickoff to the school year. To do the stakeholder perception, climate and culture survey that we do every year. Actually, the DOE has a new one. We're actually going to use the DOE's one this year, because it's been, it's been normed for validity. And then the other thing is, one of the things, you know, as a specialized dad, that bothers me, not all of our web presence is ADA compliant. Most of our website is, but we have a lot of content out there that's not ADA compliant. And so I want to make sure by the end of the year that all of our content is ADA compliant. And so goal 6 I love because it hits on so many things, and we have so many things to celebrate, whether it's future ready schools, being sustainable Jersey, one of only three districts to have all six of our schools attain that, being a model school, being a top 50 district in niche, actually having our middle school and all of our elementaries also ranked by U.S. News, and the New York Times giving us a 10 out of 10 for your money being invested in the community to live in, or after three tries being a charm in 2020, being designated as high performing by the state of New Jersey via CUSAC. So there's a lot going on in goal 6. So number one, we keep within the 2% cap. Our switch to zero-based budgeting, we've, we've provided the past three years, very good positive fund balances, which reversed the trend of negative fund balances. So we're having that return for the taxpayer. The other thing is that our equity task force is going to create, they already have a dashboard, but they're going to do an annual report, and that's going to happen this year. The big thing that's going to take the help of so many people in this room is that we're going to go through CUSAC, and we're in the first cohort, so that's in November. And we want to make sure we get high performing status in each of those areas, so we don't have a corrective action plan again. We had a corrective action plan for personnel in 2019, and it was not fun. It was a year of pain. We are high performing, and we're going to make sure we get credit for it. And then the other thing is, boys and girls, this strategic plan is about to be done. So we need to launch another strategic plan. So we're going to bring together the district crossroad group, which I'm hoping is between 40 and 60 community members, to help us launch the process for our next district strategic plan. plan. So, like I said earlier, we have the district strategic goals, we have our action steps, and how we're simplifying it for everyone is that Marauders belong, Marauders believe, Marauders succeed. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
I don't think.
Drink it from a fire hose. Got it. I have a couple other things, Mr. President. First thing, our enrollment, we're about 100 kids higher than we were this time last year. And you got more in the hopper, right, Brad? We're getting tight for space. We're getting tight for space. We got art on a cart in Sand Shore. We're getting tight for space in pockets of the elementaries. And so, you know, as we're talking about debt service and as we're talking about our options there, we need to get back to focusing on our facilities. We're doing a good job. People want to move here. The district is growing. It's a very happy problem to have. Other districts around us are considering shrinking and reducing their grade levels. We're tight for space. Our classroom sizes are up. Mountain View Kindergarten, we're looking at like 24 kids in a classroom, maybe more. We're tight for space, but that's because people want to be here. As I said to you guys earlier, convocation is going to be, it's going to kick off next Monday at 8:30. It's going to be in the impact, and we want everyone, please from the board, to be there, and all of our faculty and staff, that's everyone, bus drivers, custodians, aides, we want everyone to be together, everyone who's part of the team that, that serves our kids. And when it comes to hiring, there's a nationwide teacher shortage. To my point earlier, there aren't many kids coming out of teacher prep or going into teacher prep. We have 45 new teachers in the new teacher academy. We have another 15 temporary leave replacements. We still have four unfilled tenure track positions with a week to go to school starting, and about 15 leave replacements. So as we discussed, I've asked the board for interim hiring approval, but, you know, it's going to be a scramble between the principals and Dr. Kreider to try and get this done before the start of school. But that's part of the reality. We're not, we're not fully staffed, and we're tighter than we've ever been. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
I do have one question. It concerned me when I saw so many hirings that we were having this evening. So I didn't have time to talk to you about it. And I'd just like a little clarification because I went back to our May, June, and July meetings, and over that period of time, board voted on resignations and retirements of only 15 people. And over that period of time, counting tonight, now I'm only talking about certified teaching. I'm not talking about long-term subs and whatever. We're hiring 43. So I need to know what's going on there because certainly there's not going to be enough breakage, so that payroll is going to go way up.
So people give us their, their retirement and resignation sometimes a year out. So you'd have to go a year back, but I could have Dr. Kreider get all that for you. I can tell you there are five new positions, which we discussed in Personnel at the last meeting, because of increase in specialized enrollment. And so we've had to find that money in the budget. But so five of them right there are because of kids, kids coming in. And I can tell you that there's probably at least three others that are because of IEPs. So that's about eight right there. And then we can go back and, you know, Dr. Kreider and Kay can trace back for you, but the rest are resignations and retirements.
Any other questions?
No, not a question, just a comment to follow up on that. We discussed, I'm going to kind of preempt Personnel, but we discussed in Personnel, one of the questions that I asked was whether or not we could do a five-year histogram of our resignations from the district so that we can see the trend and take that information and use it to develop a retention plan and identify whether we're losing people at particular grade levels, particular schools, particular content areas, so that we can be proactive because we know that there's a teacher shortage. And it would be great to identify where the areas of concern are so that we can keep the talent that we have here and not lose them to early retirement or, you know, to another district. So we did discuss that in Personnel. Sorry, Dr. Giudiano.
All right, no problem, Dr. Giudiano.
So we're doing some exit polls?
Yes, Dr. Kreider has already initiated the, the exit interviews and all that stuff that's been going for about a month and a half now, but I fully, you know, agree with that, and that's one of the things Dr. Kreider is working on and getting us those deeper analytics on retention. And then the other thing, too, is the diversity of the applicant pool. Is it, is it changing? Hopefully it is. The pandemic obviously threw a monkey wrench in it, and we did see, like everyone else, a giant spike since 2020 with pandemic-related retirements.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. You all done? Is that it?
That completes my report.
Dr. Giudiano, Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Personnel met on 8/16. It was myself, Dr. Gales, Ms. Aquino, Mr. Robinson, Mr. Zidimer by phone, Dr. Zwicki, Dr. Bangia, and Dr. Kreider. That's a lot of doctors in that room. We talked about potential referendum for additional space. I know Dr. Zwicki has been pounding the drums on that, so more information to follow on that. As our last referendum, which I believe was the middle schools coming due, we're having difficulty retaining our aides and hiring aides. Some of them are moving on to other districts based on pay. It is something we do recognize that we're going to have to address when we collective bargain, when we go into negotiations with EMO in January. We have some ideas. Dr. Kreider is going to reach out to groups of veterans and seniors, other retirees. Ms. Aquino brought up a great point that Governor Murphy changed, I believe, the, the six-month hold, was it? It was six months you had to wait when you retired as a teacher. So if we can get retired teachers, if they want to come back and, and at least work a day or two or full-time with us. So we're trying to remedy that situation. District Professional Development Plan was presented of the focus on the teachers' understanding the tools to provide data-driven instruction and practices. As Dr. Gales talked, spoke of, we are, Dr. Kreider is engaging in exit surveys and interviews so we can get that data so we can look at trends. Like Dr. Zwicki spoke in this meeting, we talked about hiring practices, recruiting candidates, and student teachers. Some things we talked about in closed session we have to bring up. There was an update on LGBTQ students and what they stated at a public meeting in, in June. Dr. Bangia has reached out to the club advisor, and hopefully she'll be interviewing those students and the club advisor as well to find out what's going on there. And all action items recommended by the superintendent were supported by the committee. Did I miss anything?
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Gales, and Dr. Gales.
Thank you, sir. The curriculum committee met on 8/15. Present myself, Ms. Narcisse, Ms. Fenton by phone, Dr. Zwicki, Dr. Kreider, Dr. Bangia, and Mr. Zaire joined us at 5:20. Happy you made it. He had a prior arrangement that he told us about, so we knew he was coming late. As you've heard tonight, we've, we talked a lot about the, the need for space and the potential referendum for instructional space. According to Dr. Zwicki, the high school seems to be okay. The problems are pretty much at the elementary schools. And one of the questions that I asked was the impact of Full Day K. And Full Day K really has no impact on the need for space, but there are space concerns at the elementary schools, especially with our special needs classrooms. We talked about the analysis of international programs, and there is a concern that the programs for Mount Olive are losing money. So there's going to be an analysis done by Mr. Stansberry. We talked about the enrollment as of August 1st, with approximately 400 students transferring in and out of the district. As you've heard tonight, Dr. Zwicki's Mount Olive Tears of Success and the sample infographic on the various supports and interventions in Mount Olive, that will be easy for parents and members of the community to read. We talked about the Linkit reports and the state assessments. And so the reports are embargoed right now, so they, they will not be released. But, so, and they don't have the demographic data by the various subgroups, so we just have overall school scores. And, you know, thanks to the pandemic and other factors, we do have some work to do. We talked about the annual independent reading level analysis that will be given to us at the September meeting. And Dr. Zwicki also included the administrative retreat summary presentations. So I was still only able to get through the middle school because they're, they're quite lengthy, but I will get through them all because I know that, you know, our administrators put a lot of time and effort and energy into them. So those were linked. We talked about the department event letters to the district concerning student IEPs. And we talked about a five-year analysis of PSAT and SAT, AP, and grad rate. And I think, other than the field trips and related services, I think that's about all we covered. Did I miss anything, ladies and gentlemen?
Any questions for?
I just want to say one thing. I am very pleased to see that the fifth grade, we will pledge trip is back in next year. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Mrs. Weematt.
Yes, we also met on August 15th. Myself, Ms. Narcisse, Ms. Fenton via phone, Dr. Giudiano, Mr. Miller, Mr. Karifi, Dr. Zwicki, Ms. Libby, and Dr. Kreider. Again, many of the things were just repeats because Dr. Zwicki wanted to make sure all the committees were aware of everything, so pretty much of what.
So yeah, pretty much we're sure, thank you. So you, just to make sure we all were on the same page with everything, we did go in a couple of things that weren't on theirs was Vasa Park Event utilizing mom's parking lot. We were going to be discussing, again, also with the, the referendum coming up, looking for a, I'm sorry, I just, I'm not here today, a demographic study. It was brought to us about power school, a little bit concerned about power school because we were, Ms. Libby was unable to contact them or to, to discuss this further with them. But again, that is still in discussion. Mr. Miller was going to do a plan for the Geo Dome, the area around the Geo Dome. The, right now, what we have is just problems because of water restrictions, and there's a lot of activity in the area. Some insect issues that were going on in the building here. Let's see, I'm trying to get through this. Ms. Libby gave me copious notes of two pages, so all your board members have it, so if you want to go further just to review with it, but I just wanted to go as, you know, just to try and hit the highlights of it. We talked about the Ed Foundation and the scoreboard. Initially, we were promised that there would be a $400,000 donation, but we did not get that. But they have been working feverishly, trying, going and getting other donations. And recently, we've been hearing a lot of talk about that, which is great that they're moving forward with that. They, they did donate for scholarships as Dr. Zwicki reported the last time, and also the Nurse for the Holocaust trip. We talked about the swipe system project. More information, information from, that we had, we had garnered from Mr. Rizzelli, Mr. Gianfarro, had information of that that Ms. Libby had provided to us. Again, this was talked about. Oh, the international STEAM programs, we also did that. Was there a preliminary report from Mr. Stansberry on that, Dr. Zwicki, or we're waiting for another one?
There was a preliminary report, but then, as we discussed in the meeting, we had a subsequent meeting with myself, Dr. Bangia, Dr. Kreider, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Libby to take those projections and to actually go against the, the costs that have been incurred and to reconcile those on the expense that the district has for these programs versus the revenue. The original report reflected only revenue and then projections that did not have anything substantiated, so we sent it back to ask for a more substantive, substantial report that actually shows cost-benefit analysis.
Okay, thank you about that. Also, I know, I remember when talking back with Mr. Park, I think back before the pandemic, he had talked about trying to go into different areas, Vietnam, India, South Korea, and the Philippines, so I know we had looked in other areas. Mr. Karifi also, I'm going to call you out there, also talked about because one of the concerns of the, of the country, sending students over with safety, and there was something that Mr. Karifi had presented, so a lot less concern because of just what we have in place for safety in our schools. We talked about the swipe system. I think I just said that, Mr. Rizzelli, and, let's see. Also, yeah, apologies to Mr. Miller and Mr. Karifi because we were not able to go through their reports, so we're going to make sure that that is done. It's because we had another meeting scheduled right after that, so I just wanted to send out an apology to both of you that we didn't cover that and go through that research. Let's see, Ms. Libby got a lot of notes here. She's really good at that. She answered some questions that I had that I was waiting for from the July meeting, and she did address it. We did go through the gymnastics thing because the concern was for storage. So the container is going to be stored, with the equipment going to be stored under the stadium. I acquired about the additional need, and Mr. Miller noted that right now, the equipment we have doesn't have to be secured to the floor because I know, my daughter did gymnastics for 10 years, so I understand about what is needed and what has to be secured to the floor. So he was talking about that, but again, we talked about space issues. Let's see, we were given that report at the last meeting, but Ms. Libby noted that there is no money budgeted by athletics for additional equipment. However, there is money available at the end of the year. So again, even though we have the plan for three years, it's not currently in the budget. You know, our focus is always if it's not in the budget, we really have to look at that as far as necessity and things like that. Use of facilities updates. Ms. Soufley and Hershey, I'm not going to try Hershey's last name, I don't want to butcher it, will be at the next meeting to present what we're doing with the dome. We talked about just as far as personnel for the dome and where we're going to go with that. The facilities, usage fees, again, everything is going to be looked at as far as everything with the dome. We asked about the positions that were hired through the ESER grants, and we were given As she said, any grant funds remaining from the positions in the ARB sections will be reclassed to pay for substitutes. So that helps Ms. Libby out tremendously. Also, I thought this was a nice one, a security presentation at New Jersey School Board. She noted that she has spoken to Mr. Karifi and Mrs. Agnes about presenting at NJASBO next year and then the school boards because we're very proud and would love to highlight and showcase our employees and the great job that they're doing here. And I think that's it. You guys have anything else you remember from that? Sorry, I talked so long. I thought I was going to do less because you already talked about the other stuff.
Any questions from the board? Yes, Dr. Gales?
Thank you. So I, I wanted to make a, am I allowed? I wanted to make a.
You have a question? Okay.
A couple, but I wanted to just make a correction in the minutes because I did read them. And I was references as saying that in Piscataway, we use swipe cards, and we did not. We use Chromebooks around the building for students who left their classroom and let's say went to the counseling office or to the nurse. We used Chromebooks that were either secured to a pedestal or on a desk, and students logged in with their ID number, and it was linked directly to Genesis. So if you could correct that, I'd appreciate it. And I just wanted to make sure if I was reading the minutes correctly because there's something in the minutes that says evidence-based summer learning and enrichment, and then there's a teacher and a para, and then there's something that says, not sure what this program is. Am I reading that correctly? Did someone make that comment, or we don't know what that program is?
I don't know where it was, do you?
It's, it's at the, on the second page.
A second.
I think that's notes between Gail and the committee chair that may have gotten stuck in the final version.
Okay. The other question is, district family and community support specialist, and the salary was paid out of the ESER funds, but it's budgeted. So in terms of her salary, what, what's being done with her salary if she's being paid out of the ESER fund?
I don't know. Right now, that was something that Gail came up with. When Gail comes back, she can answer.
And the final thing for me is, for the benefit of the board, because I, I sent some questions to the, Ms. Weematt as the Chair of Finance about the gymnastics equipment because while I'm happy that we are moving forward with the, the plan for gymnastics, I was a little concerned because we didn't have the, the opportunity to take a look at the three-year plan and ask questions. And, and that's the reason why I believe that it was asked to be tabled so that we could ask questions and make sure that things were done properly. And as you're hearing, we're having space issues in our schools, and, and it could impact what we're doing as far as extracurricular and co-curricular activity. So I sent some questions to the Chair, Ms. Weematt, and one of them has been answered, and that was the, the budgeting issue because this year, year one, phase one, is being paid for by end-of-the-year money. money. Future years, or at least next year is not budgeted, so I guess we're going to be looking at possibility of end-of-the-year money next year. Is that, am I correct in that assumption?
Or it could be budgeted for the fall year and be done on July 1. That's the other thing.
And so, that was, that was one of my questions. I asked a question about, there's been some conversation about a field house, and I also asked the Chair if, and I know these items don't need board approval, but items under $6,000, and I believe that the language that I used was non-instructional, if we could get some information on that moving forward. I know we don't have to approve it, but we should be aware of it. And I just share that for the benefit of the board that I sent those questions.
So, typically, the items over six and under six go to the Chair. So, one of the things that could easily be done is the list of things that are under six, they can be sent to the Chair, and the Chair can disseminate to the board members beyond.
That's posted to the board regularly.
Yeah, yeah.
Board docs regularly.
Yeah, so that's there. So, you already have access to it, but you know, that's where you, you get lots of stuff there, toil, paper, you're going to get, you know, but yeah, there's lots of stuff there.
Can we discuss these wrestling rings? Is that okay?
What else?
And then that'll be it for me. So, the wrestling rings, very happy for the wrestling team, glad they got their rings. I'm just concerned that when this question was asked on May 9th by me, there was no mention of a PO being cut. I believe the wrestling rings are on the bills list tonight, and so, is there, is there some kind of, is there a rational explanation as to why on May 9th, we weren't told that a PO was cut for wrestling rings, and it was cut, I believe, the week before?
That's something Gail's going to have to answer. I don't know. That's, when it comes to those things that are under six and things like that, that's entirely in the business office.
Thank you. That's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Zire?
Yes, Policy and Governance Committee did meet tonight. I will provide minutes at the next meeting to be a little bit more thorough. We just came directly here, but we did discuss policies 3351 and 4351, which were tabled on January 28th during their second reading. So, we'll come back to those, and I'll have proper minutes for the next meeting.
Being summertime, I don't know if there's any board subcommittee meetings. Any committee reports? Does anybody have any? Yes, Liz?
This would fall under that, but right after the finance meeting, we did meet regarding with emo and secretary negotiations that we still have to talk about further with the board, but just to bring it out that we did talk about it at that August 15th date.
Anyone else? Anyone in the public?
Hi, Jeanne Omeo. I have a report for CPEG. For our last meeting in June, I didn't give a report. We did vote. I'm still your president, so I hope you're all okay with that. And we just, at our last meeting, talked about having Tim Rower as the Speaker come and talking about the idea of All Learners Days, or All Learners Day. It's just an activity that he talked about that we liked during the summer. I participated in the state roundtable for Span and represented Mount Olive, and very, this is what we talked about, that thank you for giving us a voice at the meeting. It's extremely unheard of that CPEG is allowed to speak in a board meeting, and, you know, I said that we do that, and they were very interested in that, so that's what most of the roundtable was about. And they said to please tell the Mount Olive Board of Education and administrators for the open communication. Thank you and for giving us a voice at the meeting. And our monthly meetings will still be the same, second Tuesday of every month at 6:30. And we're going to try to do hybrid. I talked to Dr. Zawicki about that, so we'll try to figure out how to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Zawicki, since it was brought up, you want to say anything about the scoreboard?
We have a para coming up.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see it, Karen.
Karen Fumera, 133 Flanders Drakes Town Road. I have two quick questions. On items 7.1-
I don't think we're there yet.
Oh, so, oh, Lea, I'm so sorry. Oh, my God, I'm so, so sorry. I apologize.
Come back.
Scoreboard? What scoreboard?
Yes.
Oh, the scoreboard. So, there's a lot of people here tonight, so I'm going to bring you guys up to speed. The scoreboard, the new scoreboard that's at Mount Olive High School, is purported to be the largest single-screen scoreboard at a high school in the state of New Jersey. Came from, the genesis of this was in 2019, I went and spoke before the Chamber of Commerce, and the business owners in town said, you know, they said to me, "How can we better direct market to the members of this community, you know, kind of keep our money here? There's all these big box stores, there's, you know, constant advertisements. How can we give back, support, you know, our kids and make donations?" And I got to tell you, the folks in this town, the business owners, the fireworks at graduation, you know, they, we ask, they donate money like crazy. And so, what was born from this was the idea to bring the Ed Foundation back. The board actually said it as one of my miracles at the time. Rhonda Cohen was our first president for there, and then Brian Schacter stepped in for a little while, and now Howie Weiss is the president. I sit on the Ed Foundation ex officio, which sounds fancy, but it means that I have two groups of people that are probably angry with me, and I'm the messenger boy between the Ed Foundation and the Board of Ed, and I go back and forth, and no one's really happy with me. But the idea of the scoreboard was something that we proposed in the January 2020 budget meeting, and the board approved to move forward with that project. We then canceled that project in the summer of 2020 when we canceled Phase One of CMS. During the pandemic, the, we started to do a lot of paperwork on the Ed Foundation, got it up and running, and the idea was that the Ed Foundation would pay for this asset. We went through different iterations of possible donations, and that's where you heard a lot of stuff and all kinds of crazy stuff going on. But our fantastic architect and engineer is here, Anthony Gianfarcaro and his son, Matt. And one of the things I've always believed in is underpromising and over-delivering. With all the supply chain issues that are out there, I figured it was safe if I told people we'll have it by the last game in October, hoping that it would come sooner. It was delivered on Saturday morning. It's here. Also, a lot of the work that myself and other members of the Ed Foundation have done has resulted in five, six by the end of this week, hopefully, with two kind of people, two groups on deck, who are going to make, each of them is going to make a $50,000 donation for a total of $300,000, which basically covers the cost mostly of the asset. And then on top of that, we're going to have a second set of fundraising opportunities to work with the Chamber of Commerce, in which we're going to have 60 one-minute ads that'll also run in 30-second increments as well, which will generate about $120,000 in revenue, and that revenue will be shared between the board and the Ed Foundation, and the Ed Foundation is an IRS-approved charity, and that money has to flow to scholarships and teacher professional development. So, I know it was tough, but I appreciate, for those of you who kept the faith, I appreciate it. But we have the scoreboard. It's going to be working Friday night. Mr. Stolaci and I are going to run out there and flip the coin, and the scoreboard's going to go. Now, the scoreboard's not going to have, it's not, it's not going to look like Giant Stadium on Friday night. Like, we still got to learn the system, but it's eventually going to look like Giant Stadium, where our students are going to be using the cameras, and they're going to be doing on-field interviews, and it's going to be so exciting. And the thing that, beyond the raising of the money and everything, we have such an amazing STEAM program that has existed in this district for 15 years, and I think it's going to harness all the amazing things that go on in the TV studio, the marketing classes, the economics classes, the accounting classes, and it's going to be a real artifact of the project-based learning that goes on, and, you know, it's going to be the kids running it. It's not going to happen on Friday, but we're going to get there in the next six months, and it's going to be totally embedded in our curriculum. But we got it done. You'll see it on Friday. Thank you for all those who supported us despite some of the rapids to get us here.
A couple of things. Number, you'll see in one of our action items tonight, we've changed our, a couple of meetings for September and October. One is Jewish holiday, so we had to change that one, and another one, the board will be at a board convention, so we had to change that one. So, just keep tuned, because as you know, we're going back to our two meetings, and as you know, as we said at the last meeting, no action items, unless they are absolutely necessary, will be done at the workshop meeting, the first meeting of the month. Everything will be done at the second, so you'll be able to have time to look at it and ask questions, and the board will be able to have time to look at it and ask questions. The other thing is, and it's been referenced, it's been referenced here tonight, is the referendum, yeah. We're definitely going to have to look at a referendum. Mr. Robinson and I were here for the first big two we had in 1997. It was a $40 million one, which was the largest in Morris County at that time, and then we had the $47 million for the high school. And boy, it takes time. We have to do a feasibility study. We have to do a demographic study. We went out to people's homes and coffee clutches and spoke to them and explained to them about the referendum. We went, we went up at the town council. We went, had all kinds of meetings at Kiernan's, at every place, just to pass this thing. It's definitely needed. It was tough then because it impacted our taxes quite a bit. The good news is, this one will not, because that $40 million referendum debt is coming off in 2023. And so, whatever debt we put back on will not increase the taxes. It'll just fill that void, and we certainly have to, you know, start building and what have you. So, Mr. Robinson and I had been involved in this before. We will meet with the superintendent, and we will get something started, and then I'll bring on two more board members, and we'll try to keep going on this thing. So, we really have to move on it. So, what's that? Not you, you said?
Not it.
We'll buy you dinner. That's all I have, so. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public at this time for anything you want to speak on, as long as it's on the action item for this evening. Open to the public. Are you Mrs. Fiamore?
Not today. Karen Fumera, 133 Flanders Drakes Town Road. I have two questions. The first one is on 7.8, the curriculum. I know you guys budgeted that, like it was approved a couple of meetings ago. I'm assuming this is for the writing it. Is there an idea, is there like a timeframe on when this is going to be ended? Because I'm assuming it's the curriculum that's going to be called, like the sex ed curriculum.
You want to take that, Dr. Z?
Sure. So, the sexual ed component of the health and physical education curriculum is actually very small. I know it's, you know, all over the place and whatever, and I know a lot of other districts are doing presentations in the summer, and we are, instead are taking a different tack. We just have to implement those standards by the end of the school year. So, what we're doing is we're engaging with our teachers and taking it slow to make sure we get it right, and that we're not just, because I think where a lot of districts went sideways, they just used the menu of resources that the state, you know, some intern at the state just cut and paste off Wikipedia, and said, "This is what we're going to be using." So, everything that we have, and this is what we do with curriculum mapping, is going to be curated by our teachers and a product of our teachers. If you saw my most recent blog, I put out a schedule of upcoming parent universities. The new person, Dr. Banjia, new person, she's been here longer than any of us, she gets to, you like how I'm delegating this, she's going to do the parent university on the new sex ed standards.
I have a question in my personal-
That'll take place in August, so bring candy. I'm sorry, August, October, so bring candy, please. But we plan by, you know, we're going to be, but one of the things that we're going to guarantee to you, number one, you're going to know when topics are being addressed, and you can opt your kid out, or you can, you can keep him there for it, depending on what conversations you feel like, you feel like having with your kids or not. And so, I think that parental autonomy is really important. We're not going to make a bigger deal out of it than it is, and already at any point in time, the relationship between a teacher and a parent is super important, and if a parent doesn't want a kid to be a part of a lesson, for whatever reason, email your kid's teacher, have a conversation about it. So, we're not going to turn it into a whole thing, but at the same time, we want to make sure parents feel safe, they feel informed, so stay tuned on all that. We're just not going to do it right now in August.
There's no chance that any of it's going to be introduced before October?
No.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then my second question is on 9/13, the budget amendment? This might be a loaded question, or just my ignorance? Sorry, me too. So, on the special education teachers' salaries, so I think it was the last meeting, or maybe it was two meetings ago, there was money being transferred from special education into a facility program, and then we bring in about $400,000 in out-of-district student revenue. If there's a $475,000 need for special education teachers now, was that not necessary when the money was transferred out of special education a month ago?
Yes, so what this is reflecting is the need to hire those other five teachers, and Gail, our BI, making an adjustment from exit.
Okay. And then I have a question just on, to tack on to that. If we're saying that there's a hiring shortage and a teacher shortage, and we don't have enough teachers for our children, especially the ones where we're accountable to their IEPs, is it responsible to bring students in from out-of-district that adds to the classroom sizes and to the need for specifically special education staffing if we're, is that at the detriment to Mount Olive students? Like, are we jeopardizing the classrooms?
And you and I had this conversation before here, and so the answer is no. And the reason why is because, and this is where we manage the census of our programs, these, we have certain programs that are specialized programs, where we might have one or two or three or four students in them. And then to fill out the classroom, we bring in a couple of, four other kids, so you have a class of eight, and then those other four kids are revenue generating. The Marauders' Belief Program is an example. So, we have, Sharon, what do we have, 10, 15 of our kids, something like that? But then we have room for another 10 kids.
Okay.
So, then those other 10 kids come to our program, and we receive revenue for it. So, it's not to, it's not bringing kids for the sake of bringing kids, where it generates cost. The idea is that it helps offset cost.
Okay, and that's being balanced with the need for aides or-
Correct. Yes, yes, and we have to do that. Correct.
Feature or thing. Okay, perfect. That was it. Thank you so, so much.
Mr. President, I just want to follow up with what Dr. Zawicki said about the sex standard. Just so everyone knows and is aware, those sex standards were already in the curriculum, right? So, the state just kind of shifted the core ideas and different grade levels, but those sex standards, and I, you know, I'm all big believer in parents opting on all that, they're already in our curriculum. So, I just want to make everyone aware of that. It's nothing new. Try to, try to ease everyone's mind on that. They're already in there. So, just keep that in mind. Am I correct in that, Dr. Zawicki?
By and large. I would say 99%.
Anyone else? Okay, close it to the public. Ms. Aquino, would you please move the monthly expenditures?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the monthly expenditures and reports, action items 6 through 1 through 6.7.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Abstain on 6.1, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Even though I haven't received a satisfactory answer about these rings, and I'm really disappointed that I haven't received a satisfactory answer about why a purchase order was cut in May and not shared with the board, and we see it now in August, I'll vote yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimert?
Abstain on 6.1 and yes to everything else.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Abstain on 6.1 and yes to everything else.
Mr. Stolaci?
Yes. Dr. Gales, would you please?
No, Dr. Giordano.
It's Dr. Giordano. I beg your pardon.
Thank you, Mr. Stolaci. On the recommendation of the superintendent, personnel action items, I'd like to move personal action items 7.1 to 7.26.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How many security officers will we have after this recommendation?
14.
Thank you.
Mrs. Weimert?
I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought when you were saying it. I'll think of it. I'm sorry.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimert?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Mr. Stolaci?
Yes, Dr. Gales.
I'd like to make a motion to move Curriculum and Technology Action Items 8.1 down to 8.14.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimert?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mr. Stralaci?
Yes, Mrs. Wehmet.
I make a motion to approve Finance and Operations Action Item 9.1 through 9/13.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Wehmet?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mr. Stralaci?
Yes. Mr. Zire, would you move Administrator?
Uh, yes, I'll make a motion on the recommendation of the superintendent to move Administrator of action items 10.1 through 10.9.
Any discussion? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Abstain 10.1, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Fenton?
Abstain 10.1, yes to everything else. Oh, oh, which one, sorry.
Your 10.3. Or 10.2. 10.2. 10.2.
Hold on.
You got a room, a room with her, aren't you?
Whatever am I?
10.2.
10.2, sorry.
Dr. Gales?
Abstain on 10.3, yes to everything else.
Dr. Giordano?
Abstain on 10.4, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Abstain on 10.5, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Wehmet?
Abstain on 10.6, yes to everything else.
Mr. Robinson?
Which one are you?
I don't know.
10.7.
7.
10.7, okay.
You're 7.
Abstain on 10.7, yes to everything.
And Mr. Stralaci?
Abstain 10.8, yes to everything else. Okay, open it up to the public floor. I'm sorry? Yeah. Do you, do you have roll call? Yeah, yes. At that point, we had, yeah. Open it up to the public for any comments you have now.
Karen Fiumero, 133 Flanders Drakes Town Road. I don't usually write stuff, so forgive me for not making eye contact, I always love that. Good evening. First and foremost, I need to extend an apology to Anthony Gianpocaro and his architecture company, architecture, sorry. During a meeting earlier this year, I asked about the screen at TENS and was given a wrong answer, which led to misplaced frustration. At last month's meeting, I unfairly projected that frustration. I wanna thank those that cleared it up for me and commend Mr. Gianpocaro, I hope I'm saying it correctly, for the scope and quality of his work, which I was woefully unaware of prior. With that said, I am requesting that someone look into the TENS screens and in collaboration with the staff, please find a way to get them utilized to their intended potential. Their inactivity is not only a gross waste of taxpayer money, but a disservice to the children that were supposed to benefit from it many years ago, for the past many years. I am also going to ask, in regards to agenda item 10.1 from the June 13 meeting, I'm curious if the investigation is complete. It's spanned over two months, which seems quite long compared to previous investigations. More importantly, I'm wondering if the investigation is still ongoing, are the same consequences that have historically been imposed going to be upheld as this school year is upon us? Will the ongoing investigation come with suspension of decision-making responsibilities and duties until completed? I would like to take a moment to thank Ms. Wehmet for her time and guidance on the setting up of the community committee. A proposal has been sent to the committee representatives and we hope to see this committee in action soon. Thank you to those that suggested and supported this initiative. We are truly optimistic that this will help not only bridge the communication between the district and community in a positive, approachable, and meaningful way. Thank you again. I wanted to take a quick minute and say thank you to the people that are resigning, I always wish them the absolute best. I believe where, there's a number attached to it in the agenda and not a name, but I'm, I can assume because the other gym teacher is named as a resigning, that we are losing him, and I just wanted to wish him the best from TENS, as well as everyone who is leaving TENS. It's very sad to see so many people going, but I wish them all the best. And lastly, I have an appreciation for the seats that you all hold and the weight of the responsibility. I am far from perfect and have much to learn, not just on this journey, and I'm grateful for opportunities to grow, to become better, and for the people that call me out and hold me accountable in my own actions. Despite differences of opinions and priorities, as is natural in any community, I thank you for your continued commitment to making Mount Olive Township School District better for our children. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Zouk, I'm sure you'll have your tech department over at TENS Road and trying to figure out what's going on with that screen? Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Betty, my name is Betty Hunt, and I'm an employee at Mount Olive, 25 years. This is my home away from home. Used to feel like my home away from home, but I would like to address the inequality and disparity of distribution of secretary salaries throughout the district. Salaries were approved on 5/9/22 for non-affiliated staff. On that list were secretaries who were changed from affiliated to non-affiliated. Their titles also changed at that time, but not their job descriptions. I am interested in knowing how that happened and if those changes went through the Personnel Committee first. If the Personnel Committee did get this and enough time to look it over, did the Personnel Committee actually do the math? Did they do any comparisons of salaries from last year to this year to see the proposed salary increase? And was this change budgeted? The newly non-affiliated secretaries, because they are off the pay guide, were giving $3,500 plus a 3.1 salary increase. For some, that was an increase of $5,000 or more. I am on the guide and I received 1.8%. Well, let me break it down for you, $1,005. This increase is not fair and equitable. Another point is that in the contracts with newly made unaffiliated secretaries, they can carry over five vacation days to use until June of the next school year. I can carry over five and I have to use them by August 15th. I have not paid union dues in over a year, and I'm, but I'm still affiliated with the union because they own the title secretary. And therefore, I am forced to follow their salary guide, which, as you know, I've said it before, is pathetic salary guide and one of the lowest out of 10 polled districts. I have comparison tables available if you'd like to see them. Our district has an underfunded secretary guide, and those are words from a union person, union. At one point, there was talk about consolidating the step 1, 2, and 3 columns. If that had happened and it was tabled, the 12-month column step 1, the, I'm sorry, the 12-month column 1 step 10 would have received an increase of $4,735. And the 12-month column 2 step 10 would have received an increase of $2,195. The change was going to keep the secretaries at their current step, but move them over to column 3, column 2 going to column 3. It's all very confusing here, isn't it? Yeah. They would not be receiving an equivalent increase as column 1 going into column 3 for the non-affiliated personnel. Again, is this fair and equitable? I did speak with Gail Liberty about, Gail Liberty about this before she went out and was told to speak to the union. Unfortunately, the union in Mount Olive is a teachers' union. It's a teachers' union, it's not a secretary's union, and does not prioritize the secretaries in this district. It never, ever has. However, a secretary from the high school and a secretary from the board office did speak with Tom Van Stone about this, and they were told that the secretaries did not need representation because this would be an amendment sidebar negotiation, so we had nothing to say about it. A secretary from the board office also moved out Tom Van Stone back in April of '22, and she was told he couldn't really fully address it at that time. But now, Tom Van Stone has asked the district secretaries to be at this meeting tonight with no information as to why and what we are supposed to be supporting by being here. So that's a question. But I can't ask him because I'm not in the union, although he owns my title. Okay. While I may be speaking for myself, I can safely say that many of the other affiliated district secretaries, whether dues paying or not, share my views. We feel we are being treated unfairly when it pertains to salary. We all work hard and take pride in doing a job well done and deserve to be paid equitably, to feel appreciated and valued will go a very long way. Somebody needs to stand behind and support, stand behind the support staff and make the whole process fair and equitable. And to quote our board president, the moral, the morale in this district does suck. And for the secretaries, this particular issue starts with our salaries.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marcy Macho. I live at 75 Lamerson Circle, and I'm a 10-month secretary. Mrs. Wehmet? Back in February, you had mentioned that EMO had given a proposal about secretary, secretary salaries. Well, when I went back, did some research, and I found out that the 10-month secretaries were not going to be included in this. I reached out to my representative, my union representative, and she reached out to Mr. Van Stone, who informed, who informed our building representative that it was the board's decision not to include the 10-month secretaries. Is that true?
Excuse me, you should be directing it to me.
Oh, I apologize, I apologize, I'm not sure.
A lot of people don't wanna talk to me anyhow, but that's...
Okay.
You really can't pick on a certain board member, so. You can say what they said, but just...
Oh, okay, I didn't know, and I do apologize.
I like to look at you anyhow, so.
I would like to know if we're part, if the 12 and 10-month secretaries are all part of the secretarial unit, why are we excluding the 10-month secretaries?
We're not excluding them. It's, you're in the union and we, that has to be negotiation. You know, there's not much we can do if you're in the union. Years ago, custodians, secretaries were not part of EMO. We're, I'm going way back now.
No, of course.
They wanted to become part of that. So when your, your union who represents you has to negotiate for you, we just can't arbitrarily say, hey, we're gonna give you this, we're gonna give you that. We can if you're not union.
Yes.
But we're, right now, we're powerless to do anything, but that's gotta come up this year in your negotiations.
I was on the negotiation committee, and it was very frustrating, to say the least. And I, I dropped out of the union. And I basically, that's how I got a raise, by dropping out of the union. Because in three years, less than $100 for secretary. And we do work hard, all of us, the 10-month and the 12-month included. And it's been year, it's been negotiation year after negotiation year that we're not fairly or equitably represented. And maybe we're looking to our board to maybe help, and I understand, your hands are tied there, you can't do anything, but I just wanted to express how I feel and how many of the other secretaries feel at this point. And I just wanted to make, just go on public and let everyone know how.
I just wanna say to you, that this board knows the value of our secretaries. You are very integral to this district. You're the people who make the district move.
Thank you.
Without that paperwork, nothing's gonna happen. So please, talk to your union. I know you're not in the union anymore, but your friends who are in the union, they have to have a stronger position. Do you have, are there any secretaries on the negotiating team? You said you were...
Well, I was on the negotiation team with Mrs. Regina, and then Mrs. Regina was on the last negotiation team, and currently, we don't have anyone.
You should get somebody on there.
No, oh, absolutely, absolutely. And I'll speak with my colleagues and see if anyone is interested in going, you know, applying for it, but thank you, thank you for...
We truly sympathize with you.
And I do believe that the board does, you know, appreciate what we do, each and every one of us, because we do work hard. And, but unfortunately, our EMO doesn't. And that's, I just want to go on with that.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Granagh. I do not live in Mount Olive. I live on 22 Longview Road in Sparta, New Jersey, but I'm a former employee. I worked in the district for two years as a teacher at the middle school. I have a lot of colleagues here still and friends that I consider really important in my life. So I've been following the board meetings for the past five, six months, and really, I just wanted to come and talk to you all as the Board of Education members. It's not an easy volunteer job and decisions are really difficult, but I think it's a testament to how many people have come out to talk to you all specifically about concerns about the staff, about the administration. As the nine board members that make up this board, you're responsible for hiring, evaluating, certainly supporting and collaborating with one major employee that answers to you, not the other way around. When people do approach the microphone, especially staff members, especially administrators, I really, truly hope that you're listening. And I say that because I know you probably don't need this reminder, but as the nine publicly elected board members of, that make up this Board of Education and this really amazing school district, they're coming to you because you are the only nine people that can do anything about any conduct that's happening with that one employee. That's why they're coming to you. It's not easy, and it's not fun, and it's really trying and stressful. But as the people that were chosen to provide representation to the community, your loyalty is to the community. The staff members, the parents, the administrators, that eventually all trickles down to the students, right? That's why you ran, and that's who you represent. So I just hope that you keep that in mind. Should you decide anything inappropriate, I don't know, like not good conduct is happening with the staff members that you were elected to represent and protect, that you are aware that you have the authority, you're the only nine people that can take any action about it? And if no action is taken, nothing will ever change. I wish you all the best of luck in the upcoming election.[1618.32][1618.32](APPLAUSE).
Hello, I'm Tom Van Stone, I'm the president of the JMO. I just wanna say, just to correct the record that was stated here today, and I try to make this quick, I don't like these meetings to go very long. I don't know if any of the secretaries wanna talk. There are a lot of secretaries here, and of course, they are members of the association. I just wanna make it clear that secretaries were brought in on the process of the sidebar agreement that was negotiated. I don't make decisions for people. This was all brought to them. They were part and parcel. As far as the 10-month secretary, understand, this is more for the community, I imagine the board probably already knows this, but this whole process started in response to a grievance. So it began as a grievance which had to do with hiring at the 12-month secretary position. So this was not just some kind of a, out of nowhere, discussion about secretary pay. Obviously, in our last negotiation, there was lots of discussion about raising the secretary's guide, and we did some work on that in our last negotiation, I'm sure you all were. Enough, of course not, but I just want you all to know that what was represented does not represent secretaries here. And for all the membership, I asked them to come, and if any of them wanna speak or if you wanna, you know, ask them, certainly I'm sure they would say about representing, you know, representing all this, I ask that the sidebar be voted yes. And if anybody has any questions for me, I could certainly answer.
Do you have a question? Can I ask a question?
You can ask.
I just have a quick question for you. Is there secretary representation when you're negotiating?
Always. And, yeah, I mean, we don't have any, currently don't have anybody on our exec, but not just happenstance, but certainly, I am very available for members. Obviously, if somebody's not a member, it's a process, and the two people tonight are not members of the association.
I'm sure you can understand the frustration, because you have two people working in this office and this office, and you move this person to that office and this person to this office, you give this person a raise and you don't give this one a raise, and yet they're still doing the same job.
So, I'm, I'm going to say the, so the classifications one, two, and three have been a bone of contention for my entire time at Mount Olive. So, basically, people who work as secretaries in the schools have known forever that they can never get the level of pay that people being secretaries in another building can get to. So, I understand that raises, when you get a bigger raise, it may feel like, like the idea of getting an equal raise may seem fair, but that's not really how fair exists. Like, I am at the top of the guide, I've been working in this district for 28 years. I get a very small raise every year, smaller than theirs, but I'm at the top of the guide to make more money. So, I, I get hearing numbers about what kind of a raise you get is a frustrating thing, but that's just the nature of a guide. You make higher pay increases when you're low on the guide, and then when you hit your raises are very small, and that's just the nature of a guide. Obviously, I try to get you all to give us bigger raises. I mean, that's my job. But more money is more money, and a higher raise probably means that you were making less money to begin with. And so, there was a discrepancy, which I believe started probably from when this district became a district, when Mount Olive left West Morris Central. I mean, I really, West Morris, Mount Olive became Mount Olive. So, I mean, these are, these are perennial bones of contention. That whole area has caused a lot of strife for a long time. And, you know, my, my job is, is one of having people angry, it's just the nature of it, but I can assure you, we do a good job representing our members. Any other else?
Good, good, good evening again. Marcy Macho.
Betty Han.
We were never asked any input to go on sidebar.
We were told it was a negotiation sidebar and a secretary did not have to be present. If a secretary was present, we would love to know who was there.
Okay, well, that, that. It's not, okay, I, I just wanted to go on record to say that we were not asked to be on sidebar. That's all.
And as far as we know, no secretary was in.
Wow. That's all I got to say with that. Just for the record.
Martin Washmiller.
Yeah, Martin Washmiller, 25 Woodcrest, Budlake, New Jersey. Just for the record, I am not a fan of the union. The NJGA has banned me from all their sites, so I keep on posting the application to delete. But that's just part of my, I think they're corrupt organization. But I, I have a letter I'm going to submit to the board today, it's called "What is Ethics?" And I want to read this real fast, and I have to hand this to give to the board on things that I've heard since the last board meeting. And so, I'm going to read my statement to the board. The Mount Olive Board of Education, tonight, I want to talk about ethics and policies. I want to begin with this question. What is policy 3283? Does any board member recognize that policy? Anyone?
At the top of our head, no.
Okay. Well, if you don't know, I'll let you know. And just to be clear, it's the electronic communication between educator staff and students. That's a policy that the school board has here for, the way we're supposed to communicate to the students, okay? Do you agree that Board of Ed members should be held to this, this level, and at the very least, at the very least, but since they are elected officials, shouldn't they actually be held at even a higher standard? Is that a yes or no? Do you guys think the Board of Ed should be held at a higher standard or lower standard?
We all have to be held to a higher standard, yes.
Thank you. Well, I hold all board members to a higher standard, and the Code of Conduct and Ethics standards, the Board of Ed has on its website. If anyone who knows me knows, aware of that, that I'm aware of that, I follow ethics. What would, what would the Mount Olive Board of Ed think if a teacher sent a student an email from their personal email account to get around the system to avoid getting caught on, and violating the rules? How would the Board of Ed act and teach that, that teacher?
We'd have to look into it. We'd have to look into it.
Well, it makes, it makes me feel sad to inform the Mount Olive Board of Ed that such a board member has indeed done just that. A board member emailed a student about a subject that was discussed at the most recent Board of Education meeting, after forwarding a board email to her personal email, and then emailed the student directly. I won't identify the student in front of the audience, but I will discuss that Elizabeth Wiman from the Board of Ed, who sent the email to a student, and I have the picture to prove the email. I want to read a section from the Mount Olive Board policy.
Let's go on.
Okay? Mount Olive Board Policy, this is policy number 3283, reads as following, I'm going to read three sentences, paragraphs ahead. According to the provision of the New Jersey State SA 18A, semicolon, 36 dash 40, the Board of Education adopts this policy to provide guidance and direction for teaching staff members of prevent improper electronic communication between teacher, staff, and members, students. Our Commission of Education and arbitrators appointed by the commission have determined inappropriate conduct may be disseminated, God, determined a teaching staff member unfit to discharge the duties or functions of their position, improper electronic communications by teaching staff members may be determined to be inappropriate in conduct. Now, we'll go to the following page, it says, "For the purpose of this policy, improper electronic communication seems to be electronic communication between a teaching staff member and any student of the school district." Now, you said that you, board members should be held to higher standards, so at a minimum, we need to hold it more than this standard. The content of this communication is inappropriate, defined by this policy. The manner in which electronic communication is made is not according to the acceptable protocol for electronic communication between the teacher, staff, and meant for members and students to find in this policy. Now, I'm going to go to page three of our policy. Number five, communication that is harassing, intimidating, or bullying. Now, I can tell you, if I was a student and I got an email from a Board of Ed person, I'd find that pretty damn intimidating if I was a student, okay? I would assume a student shouldn't be hearing or getting correspondence from a board member unless it's coming from the board member's Board of Ed official email address, not their personal email addresses. That's the issue. When you skirt the system, sometimes you get caught, okay? Communication between a teaching staff member and student that the commissioner and education or arbitrator would determine to be inappropriate in determining the teaching staff member is unfit to discharge the duties and functions of their position, that it should also hold valuable for board members if they're unfit for not following the rules and procedures. And the last thing I'm going to say from this policy that we have here at Mount Olive, "All emails between teaching staff members and students must be sent or received through the school district email system. The content of all emails between teaching staff members and students shall be limited to staff members' professional responsibilities regarding the student." I think that's fair to say, that holds value to our board members as well, correct? If we hold our teachers to this standard, we have to hold our board members to that standard, okay? We go on to the next portion of my conversation. I, I will distribute the duplicate, distribute duplicates of this email memorandum and agreement contract to each member of the Board of Education before moving on to my next point. Who should I give this to?
Secretary.
Oh, give it to her, now give it to her.
Can you please give one to each one of the board members, please? Thank you. And this, you can put this for your file.
I'll wait till that gets handed out.
Thank you. Thank you.
You will see in that document, you'll see an email from a board person, their personal email address to a student, an email that the student sent to the Board of Ed. A family person sent me a copy of this because they were concerned, and so that I am bringing it to the board. A lot of people are afraid and intimidated, I am not one of those individuals, okay? Now, in the documents I hand to you, I said, why do I have a document that was never shared with the people of Mount Olive, but was signed by Mr. Gales, a CCM employee and current board member? Isn't, isn't he doing so a conflict of interest and, and ethical infringement? Also, why did he sign the contract on June 6, 2022, and then Dr. Susan Breton, followed by suit on June 8, 2022, both before the Board of Ed voted on a meeting on June 13? This is a contract or agreement between Morris County College and our school district, all right? As a board member, there's a conflict of interest here when you work for one person and you bring a contract and you sign, and you're supposed to represent the Board of Ed. I want to know, was that issue brought to the board, okay? And also, who authorized it to be signed before it was approved by the Board of Ed? Did anyone answer that question?
That was brought to the board, we have discussed it. We, we are, we're taking, we're dealing with that, and we didn't find anything at this point what's wrong with it.
All right, was this ever discussed or disclosed in any committee meetings by Mr. Gales before it was signed or, and/or voted on by the Board of Ed? Did the Board of Ed know about this agreement, and if so, when?
Would that be problematic if he actually brought it to the committee?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
You can't bring it to the committee. So, we, we go through our administration, we trust your administration.
The person should have accused them altogether.
Which obviously is not the case, but let me finish, I'm almost done.
It's, it's not uncommon, though, for a memorandum of agreement to be signed by both sides, usually happens with the.
Yes, not by a board member.
Before it's presented to the board.
Not by a board member. Is that fair to say? Not by a board member of our district and of the employment status. All right, "I would formally request that a ruling from the school's ethics commission be sought because it just seems inappropriate and improper for the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed owns, regulation makes it abundantly obvious that Mr. Gales is not authorized to speak on behalf of his employee and represent Mount Olive Board of Ed at the same time." I'd like to read from our bylaws, which are also on the Mount Olive public website, all right? This is from our bylaws on Code of Conduct and Ethics. I'll start off by reading the following, this will be on page two of seven. "No board member or member of his or her immediate family shall have or interest in a business organization or engage in any business transaction or professional activities that is a substantial conflict with the proper, properly discharge of his or her duties of public interest. I hold all board members to hold their interest of our township before where they work if they are here to do their job as an elected official." Number two, "No board member shall act in his or her own official capacity in any matter where he or she is a member of his immediate family or business organization in which he or she is in interest, has direct or indirect financial or personal involvement that might reasonably be expected to impair his or her independent judgment in the exercise of his official duties. No board member shall act in his or her official capacity in any matter where he or she is a member of his family, immediate family, has personal involvement that is, is or creates some benefit to the board member or, or the member in his or her immediate family." Okay? Third, "No board member shall undertake any employment or services, whether compensated or not, which might reasonably be expected to prejudice in his or her independent or judgment of exercising his official duties here as a board member." Now, I also want to find out for public record, it's as each board member is required to sign an acknowledgement that he or she received a copy and read and will become familiar with the Code of Ethics for school board membership continued in the New Jersey NJSA 18 dot A, semicolon, 12 dash 21, eth sequence. The board secretary will provide each board member with a copy of the Code of Ethics and be required to acknowledge that an annual basis will be maintained the original signed acknowledgement in the board office. Has every board member signed that that we are aware of?
Martin, what happens is, every year, we have our attorney give us.
I know. Is it? Board member.
Every year.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Furthermore.
All right, can anyone think that his judgment wasn't impaired between his employer and sitting as a Board of Ed? Furthermore, giving the, yeah, giving the, Elizabeth Wiman works for CCM and therefore required a Code of Conduct and Ethics to obtain, why does he vote and approve it as well? All right? "I'm requesting a written response back from the Board of Ed regarding my inquiries and submission. Mount Olive deserves better from these two board members. Please don't just brush this under the carpet, which has happened before." So, I'm asking the board to take a stance, to make sure Code of Conduct and Ethics are followed. I also want to make sure that no, in the future, no board member from their personal email address addresses a student. It's intimidation and can be viewed as bullying, okay? Also, I'm just, also, the board attorney, it is your job to represent and keep everyone compliant, because that is your role and that's what they pay you for. So, please, in your best capacity, please do that. And I do want to find out, in writing, will you go to the School Ethics Board Commission to get a ruling on the inappropriate actions that have taken place that I've brought to your attentions? Do you have copies?
We will seek advisory from the Ethics Commission, yes.
Well, as of right now, you have copies of both, all right? I want to thank you and you have a great day.
Thank you.
Mr. President, do you mind if, if.
No, I don't want to carry this on further. We, we know, we've discussed it and everything else, and.
And I also have a comment I'd like to make at the end.
Maybe personally going to exasperate everything. We, we, we know, we'll discuss it between ourselves.
My name is Shelley Boylan, a resident of Mount Olive Township for 23 years, an employee of the school district for almost 19. I'm here to share my discontent with the handling of the secretary salary, got, salary guide sidebar. Only a few of us who are still in the union, me being one of them, were informed yesterday that this sidebar started in February. In February, without any secretarial input. Again, there was a negotiating committee in March, again, secretaries were not informed. A signed offer was brought to the board in May, again, without communication with the secretaries. I want to thank our board for tabling this sidebar, reaching out for more information as we have not been properly represented. Decisions have been made to remove secretaries from their union positions, making them non-unit with very generous increases in their salary, but leaving behind many of us. Many secretaries that have pulled out of the union due to lack of representation are still tied to this union salary guide. Our 10-month secretaries are not included. Our salaries will be frozen for a year. We are moving into a contract negotiation year in January. With this sidebar, are we even going to be able to negotiate a fair contract in January? As a paying member to the union, I would like to know what secretary was involved in this sidebar negotiation in February.
Ma'am, you're supposed to direct your comments to us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We, we don't know, but if you want, we'll get back to you, let you know. We'll find out.
I appreciate it. And again, I, I respect the support the board has given the secretaries. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. William Bradley Helene. I'm the district, uh, of reporting, the district director of student achievement reporting. I forgot myself. I would like to take a minute and speak about a statement from the last board meeting. At exactly three hours and 40 seconds into the meeting, when folks are getting promotions and raises, which they all did, no one was coming in complaining when I was promoting them and giving them raises. But when I do things like, can we look at this spreadsheet from March of this year that has blindly recommended special education minority students for the lowest level classes despite the internal data that we have? When I am the person who is directed by the board to hold people accountable for unbecoming conduct, that is part of my job. Now, the timing of everything is very coincidental to me that we are all of these complaints, it's very coincidental to me that there are all of these complaints and grievances when there were none before March. Number one, giving someone a promotion and a raise does not mean you are buying them. They respect morals or ethics. You are placing them in a position that you feel is more appropriate for their abilities and the needs of the district, not for their undying loyalty or to compromise their personal beliefs. And not everyone benefited from a raise or promotion. Number two, we never spoke, spoke of complaints and grievances publicly. We did often privately. Why privately? Because many members of the association have been intimidated by you, going as far back as November of 2019. At that time, many members wanted me to come to you and speak to you about the environment that we were working in. The stories that they were telling about what they considered personal abuse was astounding then. At the end of the night, though, they didn't want me to come to you as they were afraid of the jobs and feared retribution.
Comments should be directed to the chair.
I'm sorry. I drifted. Pardon me. Then COVID happened. Fast forward to the 2021 school year, and 2019 happened all over again. During the negotiations for our contract, we conferred with Eva Vogel from NJPSA on May of, May 28, 2021, regarding what we were being offered. At that time, Ms. Vogel asked us about what was happening in Mount Olive. Based on the rumblings she was hearing from a. Based on the rumblings she was hearing from attorneys that had been contacted by our members. On February 25th, 2022, Kevin and I, Kevin Stansberry and I, met with Gia Vogel to find out what we could do to make our conditions more tenable. Ms. Vogel suggested a survey of every member of the association. An NJPSA member, our rep, suggested a survey. The investigation that was spoken of at the 42nd of the third hour began on March 16th. Long after the other events. This environment is nothing new, this has been festering since before November of 2019. And yet, holding people responsible for their actions is your job. And we all expect you to carry out your job in a fair and equitable and respectful manner. Finally, at the 47th second, first minute third hour regarding Tyrone Howard. The quote was, who is suspended? People of color and people on free and reduced lunch. You specifically refer to members of MOASSa turning a blind eye to special needs students, low-income students, minorities, and people of color. It is interesting that you picked this time to emphasize these groups publicly. Your comments are highly disrespectful and offensive to the professionals who work here. Thank you very much for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
That data was reported in public session in November of 2020. The visceral reaction by some people that still exists today to looking at the equity gaps that exist, it's the reason why we have the Equity Task Force. And let me tell you something, in June of 2020, when the alumni and students took to Instagram to put forward their stories of discrimination and bullying and harassment through Mount Olive and color, I had nothing to do with that. And when students came to the book club and to the Equity Task Force to talk about the process that they went to and how they were denied access to AP courses that white students were given access to. And when we spot check placements and we look in and we see that there are special education students with 1,300 Lexile levels that are placed in remedial classes and minority students placed in remedial classes for no other reason that we could identify, that is disconcerting. That is absolutely disconcerting, and the visceral reaction to that, what is more so is that why don't we embrace this? Why don't we look at those gaps, because if we're truly going to pursue blue ribbon, that's the data, that's the gap right there, and it will make a lot more kids feel like they belong.
We're not going to have a debate right now, Brad, go ahead, Ken.
Sure, good evening. My name is Kevin Stansberry and I have been a member of, good standing of, the Mount Olive Administrators and Supervisors Association for 26 years. And I have served in numerous administrative capacities during that duration. I'm speaking to you tonight because I serve as the elected Vice President of this organization and my responsibility is to represent and voice the concerns of this team of extraordinary dedicated and highly professional educational leaders. We, my esteemed colleagues, want our opportunity to share our narrative with the Mount Olive Township Board of Education because you've clearly been only hearing one side. You have been blocked from pertinent information and background explanations. Contrary to the continuous decrees that one person or a handful of disgruntled association members are driving this dialogue and request for protection and parity of protocols. We are here to inform you that this entreaty is from every member of our association. You have been misinformed, influenced, manipulated, and coddled about numerous topics, action items, and district matters. In our case, there are serious issues that require your attention and action. And that goes for all stakeholders present. I want to revisit an exchange that took place at the last Board of Education meeting on July 25th involving action item 9.6 from the June 13th meeting. We do not necessarily refute administrative code in terms of recommendations, however, we believe that a Board of Education can choose to revisit and rescind approvals when it has been established that the action items have been presented under false pretenses and illegitimacy of status or station. What is debatable is the self-assessment that the Mount Olive Board of Education's best interest has been served as a priority. In essence, the post in question is designed to represent the said Board of Education. The contention that vital and integral communications and correspondences from our association have yet been shared with the members of the Board or individual Board members, which at its core are the reasons that for the first time in MOASSa's history, we have come to the microphone to be heard. It's unheard of, this is uncharted territory for us. And make no mistake, we have all been afforded the privilege of leading this district in our respective capacities and have produced amazing, high-performing desired outcomes in a plethora of categories that have placed our students in rewarding, successful experiences and pathways. And we don't refute the questions on the table. What we do refute is the way and the manner in which they are delivered, I'm sorry. For that, we are grateful to this Board of Education. And please understand that this has also been reciprocated back to the community in so many ways. All of our efforts have been mutually beneficial to all constituents of our district. As the investigation associated with action item 10.1 from the June 13th meeting has been completed, you know, we're still waiting, it's not, it's not been completed, which depicts the magnitude and gravity, gravity involved of our concerns. Alright, I think someone mentioned the duration of that. There's a lot to be talked about. And it has yet been resolved. And on a side note, we are looking forward to the results being viewed by you without redactions or omissions. And yet, recommendations and reprisals are still permitted to continue. How is this possible? Who is holding who accountable? That has been the intent of our respectful request to table, revisit, and rescind agenda action items. We would also like to reiterate the intricate thread of connectivity that presents a conflict of interest within the dynamic of sitting panelists before you this evening and a seated contracted service provider. On May 3rd, four members of MOASSa met with three Board members, Board of Education members assigned by Board of Education President Anthony Strelachi. Discussed matters presented to the Mount Olive Board of Education. That meeting revealed significant work environment concerns. In that moment, in that May 3rd. A total disregard for professionalism and other allegations of workplace violations professionally. We are grateful for action item 10.1 from the June 13th meeting. But what measures have the Mount Olive Board of Education taken to protect and support its administrative staff? Which is one of the tenants of the New Jersey School Boards Association. Nearly two and a half months have passed and the Board of Education has been silent. And we fully understand the fiscal responsibilities entrusted with the members of the Board of Education and that business decisions for the well-being of the district are paramount. But there needs to be a balance between financial encumbrance and human collateral. I implore you to consider that. The law of diminishing returns needs to be taken into consideration. What is to be gained? At some point, there may be complications for the inaction of this Board as a whole and as individuals. We want to be fairly represented. And another group also spoke to that this evening. Not to work in an environment that is untenable, demeaning, and dismissive. We are seeking a return to a time when we were a unified, cohesive, respectful learning community. Look at the YouTube videos for the last three years. I've been coming to these Board meetings since 1997. I haven't missed maybe but a handful. A time when trust and yield mattered. A time when providing the best educational opportunities for the students in our charge was our utmost priority. And personal branding had no place. Students first, all students. Striving to positively impact all. Not only with the great teaching staff, but the incredible administrators who have been a part of that process and part of that journey. You've been given spin, diatribes, and falsehoods about the state of affairs. There's just no other way to put it. We are all awaiting the outcome of 10.1. And as my measure for the last two times at the microphone, and hopefully this is the last evening that I have to do that, come to this microphone. Because nobody wants to do this. Nobody wants to ever think that they have to come to the microphone to fight for their learning environment, for their workplace environment. It, it's absolutely absurd. At this point, I would like you to respectfully, and I would respectfully request the following. Revisiting and rescinding action items that this Board approved at June 13th and the July 25th meeting. Especially as it pertains to action item 7.6, 7.7, 7.12, HIJ. Until action item 10.1 is completed. And then you can go back and revisit. Pretty simple. And then, from the last meeting, July 25th, action item 9.3, Special Education Audit. 10.1 from that meeting, the Special Education Independent Investigation. As al, as always, and with all sincerity, we greatly appreciate all the support that you've given the administrative team over the years. I think we've made you proud, I think we've made this community proud. And we greatly appreciate your time and considerations. Thank you.
Kevin, response to your speech up here. Yes, the Board has been silent. We have to be silent because there's an ongoing investigation and we don't want to compromise or say anything inappropriate that would compromise that investigation. That's why we have been silent, we, we just can't say anything at this point, until it's done. The only difference is parity of protocol.
I'm getting back.
That's all I'll say, I'll leave it at that. Parity of protocol.
Rhian Jarvis, 54, Deer Path Drive, Flanders. I want to start by thanking Mr. Strelachi for acknowledging there are problems that need to be addressed in our district. I was happy to hear that you're changing the meeting format, so action items will be presented the first meeting of the month and voted on at the second meeting of the month. So Board members and community members will have a better understanding of what is being voted on. I applaud you for making this change and trying to do better for our community. Also like to thank Ms. Weymouth and Dr. Gales for their service on the Board. With that said, during the July 25th Board Meeting, accusations and comments were made by Dr. Zouicki that left me infuriated. He's not a good leader. I question if he has a respect for our administrative team. I do not respect him and I've lost respect for select Board members. We do not understand their responsibility to hold him accountable per the Code of Ethics, make decisions in, in terms of the educational welfare of children and seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. My question to this Board tonight, do you believe that it is acceptable for Dr. Zouicki to make accusations that our administrative team prior to his employment had a direct negative impact on the graduation rates of male African-American students and the math proficiency, English proficiency, and graduation rates of special education students without providing supporting documentation? To publicly make accusations against valued members of this district without providing any evidence defaming their reputation? I know that I bite my tongue every time I come to these meetings and I don't say things I know to be true because without proof, it would be irresponsible to repeat them publicly. I believe these superintendents should do the same. Dr. Giordano told us on the way to private session on July 25th, there are things you don't know. Well, Dr. Giordano, I would like him to know, there are a lot of things that we do know, things that we don't say because we're responsible enough not to. Provide factual data, data I have requested multiple times publicly at Board meetings that support these accusations or don't make them. If you can make accusations publicly, you can show the data. Dr. Zouicki stated that no one was complaining when they saved, when they received promotions and raises. My question is because he made these accusations against the administrative team on May 11th, 2021, when he met with my husband and I in the conference room here at the Board Office. Why were these administrators given promotions and raises at all if what you are suggesting is true in support of the facts? Why are you referencing a March 2022 spreadsheet when it was vocalized May of 2021 and now tonight back to 2018? Why are you implying the March 2022 spreadsheet is the reason administrators are complaining now? Did you have the evidence then? Do you have it now? And why do you continue to refuse to publicly share spreadsheets that you so confidently wave around at Board meetings? The Board Attorney at the July 25th Board of Ed meeting stated he did not recommend rescinding action item 7.6 from the June 13th Board meeting because there would be employees in positions without job descriptions. However, I'm here to vocalize publicly I have serious concerns that Mrs. Fenton conversed with Dr. Zouicki before voting no to tabling this action item that he recommended. She stated she voted no for now, and it's concerning that the Board Attorney did not correct her to understand that no for now was a vote not to table action item 7.6 and that it was not a for now vote. This was a five for vote not to table this action item and have publicly vocalizing concerns over its passing. He also stated action item 7.7 cannot be rescinded at this time because making personnel changes has to be done under the recommendation of the superintendent per NJSA 18.A 27-4.1. Mrs. Fenton conversing with Dr. Zouicki prior to the voting and the discussion and obvious confusion by several Board members leaves me to have concerns about this vote as well. This Board needs to show the public that they understand what they are voting on and the severity of each and every vote they make. I do not feel that you've all shown that you understand this. All of this for me comes back to detracking, Dr. Zouicki's Mount Olive agenda. Eliminate tracks in the name of correcting inequity without providing evidence supporting, one, the inequities truly exist, or, two, that detracking will effectively correct the problem. Blame the administrative team for inequities, take no responsibility although you've been superintendent for four years and attempt to correct them in the most inequitable way I can imagine by removing honors in general level classes. You're doing this without a clearly laid out plan of providing support to struggling learners and enrichment to excelling learners without providing information on what exact training is being provided to teachers, without providing information on what exact universal screening data is to be used to assess the students. It's hard to believe that you care so passionately that he cares so passionately about the special education population of this school while he's so focused on scoreboards and long jump hits. Another claim made without any supporting evidence. How many accident reports exactly were submitted by students injured running into the fence on the other side of the track? How many were submitted by students hit by baseballs? When students are going three months without the one-to-one support they require, when you can't get aides in the classrooms, when I've been told special education teachers have to make photocopies of material, this should be your priority if you truly care about the students and not just your agenda. I, you can't provide for the students now and we are to believe that through COVID, is it time to plan an effective solution to do better by the special education and minority students than our team of administrators have done over the past 20-plus years? I will repeat, this is your agenda and not because it will provide a better or more equitable education to our children because it's something to get you in the news. I've asked for facts, I've asked for policies, I've asked the Board to ask for facts and policies, yet to be shared. Instead, I've been brushed off on the Assistant Superintendent that's been here a couple of months. When her secretary asked me if I would like to schedule a meeting, I repeated that I would want the information made public, but that if Dr. Vanje would like to send me the information requested, I would then review and meet with her if I thought it would be productive at that time, no information, no information was shared. None of this is okay. Board members, I want to repeat that it is your ethical obligation or the, per the Board Member Code of Ethics to, or Code Number Two, Board Members will make decisions in terms of ethical welfare of the children and seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. How is detracting in the individual needs of all children? Exactly how? Detailed information. Demand it, it's your responsibility to do so. For Code Number Nine, Board Members will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. That means listening to and not dismissing concerns brought to you by our administrative team. That means not allowing the superintendent, regardless of his position of power, to speak of them as he did at the last board meeting. Support and protect. For code number 10, refer all complaints to the chief administrative offices and act on complaints at public meetings only after failure of administrative solution. I would like to know what this means to you. Dismiss my concerns continuously and forward all questions to Dr. Zouicki because he needs to address them as chief administrative officer? Wrong. He is the problem. What bylaws exactly address how I as a parent or school administrators for that matter can be heard when concerns are with the leadership of our superintendent and belief that the changes he is making are not equitable for my students, special education students, minority students, or any students in this district? Because at the end of the day, he works for you. These are not concerns that you can continue to dismiss. Thank you.
Brian Schecter, 80, Crenshaw Drive, Flanders. First of all, congratulations to the Ed Foundation, the board, Mr. Gia Pacaro, Glenn and his team for getting the scoreboard up and running. And most of all, for the six businesses that have come up and forward to fund $315,000 of a $400,000 purchase in year one. That's great news. Projections add that going into year four. So way ahead of schedule. Congratulations to the Ed Foundation for that. Demographic study, Mr. Strolici, you mentioned. As a member of the planning board, there are lots of changes that are going on with some of the properties in ITC, ITC North, where some of those developments have been scaled back and have gone to commercial instead of residential. It's good news for the schools, good news for the taxpayers. So I would definitely want you to reach out to the town, get some information on that. We just made that stuff public at our last meeting. Lastly, I want to talk about board policy 169.02. That is the board member use of social networks and social media. This is an issue that was, that I brought up to you, Mr. Strolici, and also to Mr. Zidderber in August, on August night, where we've had, and I'll be more than happy to address this in closed session with, with the board and not, not bring this out to the public, but we did have some, we did have a board member who posted some derogatory statements, not true statements, infamous statements on social media, just sometimes divulging closed session information. So again, we need to look at that policy. You need to hold people accountable to this. Because I'm going to hold them accountable. I'm going to hold the board accountable for actually enforcing the regulations that they put in place for this. I'm going to be here tonight. I would love to address in closed session this, have the board investigate, do what they need to do, but I do want some action on this. And I thank you very much. And again, have a great night.
Anyone else? Okay, am I closing the public at this time? Got to jump around a little bit here for board comments. Mrs. Zire.
Yes, I have no comment. Thank you.
Mrs. Fenton.
I have no comment either.
Mrs. Narcisse.
I have no comment.
Dr. G.
No comment.
Mr. Robinson.
I hate to break the chain, but tonight was one of the worst nights I've spent on the board. I heard two of my colleagues really, really castigated. And I've known them for many, many years, even before they were on the board. They were always there with the interest of the students of Mount Olive, not with anything else. And they worked very hard, like I said, before they even got on the board. And they have continued to do that since they've been on the board. And this nonsense that we heard tonight is absolutely ridiculous. There's no gain on what he does. These are free programs for students, not just our students, but students all over Morris County. And he does not get an extra dollar for any of them because they cost the County College of Morris money. But they want to do this for students. And they want also, you know, for the kids to come, but they don't, they don't pressure them. They don't have to come there to take these courses. So essentially what it is, is they're just helping us and our kids and the rest of the county. So, I mean, you can think what you may, and if you choose to listen to somebody who doesn't know or refuses to know, then that's up to you. But I can guarantee, and anybody that knows them from being in this district knows what kind of people they are. Thank you.
Sequino.
I just want to say thank you to all the secretaries who came out tonight, many of whom I don't know yet, but I'm looking forward to placing names with faces and to our administrators as always for coming out and voicing your concerns. Thank you to both groups.
Now, Mrs. We Met.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Robinson. It's nice to hear a fellow board member talk so well about myself and Dr. Gales. I'd love to hear other board members' comments on that. I'm going to say one thing to the person who came forward. I'm not quitting the board no matter how hard you try to defame my name or embarrass me. You know what? I don't know what your game is, but my game is to do the best I can as an elected official for the students of Mount Olive Township. And when you say... Now you're going to get me upset when you say stuff like that. I'm very emotional when I, when I hear that. Thank you. What happened was, and I, and I pretty much don't give fuel to someone's fire who is trying to light it under me, but what I sent was, where did you hear this information? Because we had a finance meeting on a Monday where we discussed gymnastics equipment. On Wednesday, many of us got multiple emails of, why are you tabling this? I just happened to pick one out that said, and this is what I wrote, where did you hear this information? Because I think it's very important to find out, how does the public know about information that was at a finance meeting on a Monday? We haven't, we never even released the information until I believe, was it Sunday, Lynn, where the note actually went out and was posted? So how does that get out to the public? You know what? I'm concerned. And when something like that happens, I'm going to ask. I just happened to pick that one email and ask, how did you, where did you hear this information? Because it's very troubling how someone out in the public knows when it's not supposed to be released. I will also say something about my colleague here because I know CCM seems to be a big topic for a couple of people here, for him and his cohorts. It's a program, and I know Ms. Narcisse questioned at one time about CCM, and what it is...
I just thought in a closed session.
Correct. I just said.
I felt that that was more appropriate.
Okay. That's fine. That's fine. I just, and that's fine that you did, because that's what your job is to do. That's a compliment back to you. And there's no financial gain to CCM for this program. It's called college readiness now. What happens is, students apply to CCM, just to make everyone aware of what happens, what the process is, students apply to CCM and they get accepted. There are certain students, and I have nothing to do with it, I just advise students once they're in there, that Dr. Gales works with, and I'm sorry to go on your thunder here, but I just thought it was important because I don't want us to think badly of this program when this is something that's given to Mount Olive students and is given to all students across Morris County. And for us to be a part of this, and this has been a part of us for years. It's before Dr. Gales was there, there was another woman, there was another one before that. So this has been a program that has been there for, I don't know how long. It's a grant-funded program that's given to students who qualify to take a college success class and to take a math, a developmental math class in the summer before they start. Why wouldn't you want to give this to students? There's no pretense, there's nothing, Dr. G... I won't go into it because I know you're going to probably explain it, but again, why would you try to take it away from, and again, there's no financial gain to us, there's nothing, and so please, and I know, thank you for that applause because I work there. So what? You're not going to try and make now me considered secondly about, oh, you know what, oh, maybe I shouldn't do this. No, I will do everything I can, no matter if they're a CCM student or they're a Mount Olive student. I don't care. I don't even know when there's Mount Olive students involved in Dr. Gales's program. I just do students and I advise students. Because you know what? To me, that's our future, is the students. So I'm going to make sure, especially Mount Olive students as well as the other ones in Morris County, get the best that they can out of an education and to go forward. And again, I will do everything I can. I want to also thank Officer Kluska. He's the one that started, I see Mr. Kariifi in the back, I always say, he started the whole program with security and everything else of what we had done back at the high school and great on your next adventure going forward, him and all the other retirees. And also I saw some resignation. Again, good luck to everyone. Thank you to the administrators, to the secretaries, to all staff members who come forward. It's a daunting thing, and I know I talked to someone who comes forward all the time and she was always very hesitant about it. And she said, it's nice to see a smiling face when you come up here. And I, when I was president, that was one thing I made sure that people did not feel that they were intimidated by coming up here. But again, it's hard. It's hard to come up here and be in front of nine people and try to talk. I was one of those people back 2008 because I was elected in 2009. I was on Mr. Stansberry's mapping committee. But you know what? It is, it's very, it is intimidating to come forward. So that's why we did that community program. And thank you, Ms. Famera and Mr. Orzillo, for pushing that through and working with that. And again, just thank you to everybody who comes forward. And thank you again for that applause. That was very heartwarming. Thank you.
Dr. Gales.
Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. We Met and, and Mr. Robinson. And I'm just going to say, I have a couple of things that I want to talk about, and I'm going to talk about them in reverse order of the importance of what we should be talking about, if you would just bear with me. But I just want the, the board and the public to think about this one thing. This is the second time that Mr. Wells Muller has had access to information that the public normally wouldn't have information about. He didn't even know that it was discussed. So how would he have the MOA from Mount Olive and CCM? But mull on that for a minute. I've always contended that Mr. Wells Muller is not working alone, but be that as it may. I would encourage the public to ask the administration, don't ask me. Ask the administration about the benefits of CRN and their involvement, how long they've been involved in CRN, long before I came aboard, and the benefits to the Mount Olive students. Because along this train of thought, the only losers will be the students who leave Mount Olive and attend CCM, which is what, about a quarter of the graduating class every year? So if that's what is Mr. Wells Muller's aim, not only is he attacking me, he's now hurting the children of Mount Olive, which he pretends to want to support. So I also want to share this regarding the SEC decision regarding the ethics charges because I thought that we were beyond this until I saw his quote in the Mount Olive Chronicle. And then his friend, Mr. Schecter doubled down on social media by stating that two sitting board members are currently facing ethics charges recently. So I want to say in response to the misrepresentation of the SEC's decision in the August 11th edition of the Mount Olive Chronicle and on social media, I want to say that on May 24th, the School Ethics Commission dismissed all allegations against me in their entirety, stating, based on the foregoing and in reviewing the facts in the light most favorable to the non-moving party, which is Mr. Wells Muller, the commission voted to find that the complaint, and count two specifically, was timely filed, but to grant the motion to dismiss in its entirety because complainant failed to plead sufficient credible facts as support of finding that respondent violated the seven ethics codes, he said, I violated in count one and two. The SEC goes on to say that regarding counts one and two, even if the facts as contended are proven true and sufficient with credible evidence, so even if I did do what he say I did, they would not support a finding that I violated the seven ethics codes that he said I violated. This clearly contradicts Mr. Wells Muller's intentional attempt at misinformation with his quote in the Mount Olive Chronicle where he says, "They ultimately decided it was beyond their scope of authority and advised me to pursue it elsewhere." Not that he was innocent, but because of this, it was dismissed. Completely false and inaccurate. So let's, let's check our scorecard. Mr. Wells Muller adamantly objected to the board's decision to spend up to $10,000 on an internal investigation to uncover who disclosed confidential information to him, but he's okay with pursuing ethics charges against me and my colleague here. Right now to the tune of $6,974.50 for my defense alone, and who knows what the bill is going to be for Mrs. We Met. He objects to a $650 cell phone for BOE use, but is okay with spending $400,000-plus dollars of taxpayers' money for Jumbotron. So when it suits his purpose, he's okay with it. But I think that after nine months, now we're going on 10 months, of this behavior, it's time for us as a community to call out this behavior because it distracts us from what we should be talking about, and that's student achievement. And I want to thank the community and the board members who have offered words of support. And I want to reaffirm my commitment to be the representative leader you elected me to be. You didn't reelect me to go along to get along or try to win a popularity contest. And although on most issues, I stand in the minority, as your elected school board official, I will continue to ask the tough questions and seek accountability. And I hope that this is the last time we will have to address this misinformation. So that's the least important thing that we want to talk about. I want to share with you guys that I had the opportunity at one of the township's events in the park to meet Karen Calasoro from Halos for Angels. And I shared this information with Dr. Zouicki and Dr. Banjia, and I wanted to share it with the board and with the public, that this is an organization located in Florham Park. And what they do is, when individuals suffer trauma, they step in and provide support to those families, run errands, do house cleaning, walk the dog, grocery shopping. So I shared that. In the event that we have families, students, staff members who suffer trauma, Halos for Angels is a very good resource in addition to the other supports that we have here in the district, and hopefully we take advantage of it. And hopefully we're still having conversations with Edge New Jersey as well for our members of the LGBTQ+ community and support them as they're coming back to school. And finally, I had the pleasure a few weeks ago, actually on August 4th, of being a judge again for the Real World Showcase, which many of our students participated in. I've been a part of Real World Connections now, gee, since my son was a freshman. Actually, he was in the middle school and I joined Real World Connections and I became a part of the, the parent advisory board. And myself, Dr. Zouicki, and Ms. We Met were very instrumental in bringing Real World Connections here. I was a judge on April 4th, and the students, over the course of the summer, developed various projects in the field of game development, web development, video editing, animation. They took a course, Intro to Python. We had a group of students who developed their own voice translator, which I still have up on my desktop. So they had, they had like 12 languages that you can speak into the computer and you press a language and it would translate whatever you've spoken. They developed that from scratch. We have a couple of students who are actually on the RWC executive team, and I think one of them is either a freshman or a sophomore. So our kids are doing very well. I'm always impressed with the types of projects that the students do. They are actually on teams with students from other, other districts. They are learning skills such as collaboration and teamwork and problem solving as they're building their projects. And they are having the time of their lives. So thank you, Dr. Zouicki, for supporting that program financially so that students can take full advantage of it. Thank you to the board for approving that. The kids and the parents love it tremendously and I enjoy being a judge. And on that note, I will say thank you and conclude my conference. And on that note, I will say thank you and conclude my comments.
Mr. Zire, so you had something?
Yeah, I did want to apologize for my statement as it came out a little louder than expected. Everybody has a right to speak here. I can tell you, it's just difficult, because I'm watching a community be ripped apart, not only just here in the education, I'm talking about across the world, in my district as well. People are attacking people left and right, and a lot of the conversations are not being discussed on where do we go from here, but it's just kind of rehashing. I just actually bumped into a person, hadn't really had a chance to talk to for a while, and he was like, wow, you gained some weight. It's actually, it is actually the stress of this position. One of this, part of this is the stress of this position. There's other things going on. We are volunteers, there is a lot going on in our lives that, you know, a lot of people don't see, and we are doing our best. And I can tell you that everybody up here is striving to make this a better place, and we are doing what we are capable of doing. And we are trying, and concerns are being heard, and we're doing the best we can. Last thing I'd say is that CCM agreement is actually executive content, so Mr. Wells Muller, if you'd love to tell me where you got it, I would love to find out. Don't tell me down.
I have CCM, I overrequested.
Okay.
Yeah, but how would you know to do that?
I overrequested eight different programs.
Yeah, that's it, that's all I have. Thank you, everybody.
Dr. Zawicki. I've told you, you want to say anything? Okay, what I would like to say is this.
Yeah, Mrs. Fenton?
Oh, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon. I'm sorry.
No, you did, you asked her. I apologize.
You did ask her.
My bad. The stress, I'm eating, I gotta eat.
I travel around to a lot of other districts, and I've spoken to many, many board members from other districts, and they revere the Mount Olive School District. We have a very, very strong school district, and that's because every single employee we have is an integral part of this district, whether it's a custodian, whether it's a secretary, whatever. It was proven here tonight how strong we are, because we don't have employees who sit back and acquiesce and take everything. They come forward and they tell us what they want to tell us, and they're adamant about how they want to be portrayed, and how they want to be professional, and what they want to do, and how they want to teach these children. We have parents who come to us and tell us, hey, I don't like this, I think this should be done. We've seen it over the years where we really had to change our curriculum at one point because we're going to be getting rid of some honor courses at one point, and the people came forward and had us change it. But this also brings up the fact that there's no denying it. We have an unease in this district, and this unease has to be remedied, because if we don't, we're going to have low morale, we're going to have low productivity, and we're going to have distrust. And if we continue on the course that we are right now, and we don't remedy what's going on, that's what's going to happen. This district can be the flagship of Morris County. We're offering kids courses that are way over my head. We offer facilities that other districts just cry for. But what's been happening under 30 years that I've been on this board, I have never seen the unease that we have, and it has to change. And we have to do something about it, and we have to start looking within ourselves to do something about it. That's what I have to say for this evening. Okay, so, do I need a motion to go into confidential session?
So moved.
Be resolved at the board meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing attorney-client privilege. Anything else?
Um...